Okay, in order to be a public role man.
Here.
Jordan, here. Lipscomb, here. Oakbridge, here. Smith, here. Thrash, here. Vincent, here. All members are present.
Has everyone received a copy of the minutes from the October 3 meeting? Does anyone have any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept those. J.C., have a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been approved. They are now the minutes of record. One thing I'm going to very quickly bring up to council on their new business that we just didn't decide on it until tonight, whether how it will be done. There is a class coming up on records retention and it basically decides how long each record for different departments and different things have to be kept in our public files if people want copies of records. We have a choice. Jennifer McMillan, I guess, is going to attend for the mayor so that she's going to take the class so everybody's informed. Also, council has a choice. They can either all attend the meeting or they can appoint a representative to take the class. I think it's, what is it Jacob?
There's three dates. It's October 25th, I think the same time in November, and then I think December 23rd.
So the question is, do you want to consider appointing Jacob, the mayor asked for Jennifer, for him to take the class and he'll be having all the knowledge since he's the council clerk for how long the records have to be retained? By law, certain records have to be so long, so.
Excuse me, Jen. There's one thing. Jennifer's, Jen's actually going to be designated for.
For me, approved by council because that's what the audit, that was one of the things.
Yeah, so it's under the financial director.
So it has to be in the minutes.
Okay, so it's financially under council. So you can either all attend the meeting or the class, you take the class online, or we can appoint someone to take the class as a representative for the city council itself. And it's up to you how you guys want to do it.
No, I was saying we have to take it again.
Yes.
If we've already taken it, we have to take it again.
So if one or two people wanted to go, they couldn't, but the whole council wants to go? You can still do it. Like if, like if say, if you designated me to do it, but you wanted to take it, you can still do it.
So it doesn't have to be the entire council?
It's either the entire council or a representative for council. So he can be the representative.
But if you appoint a representative, it doesn't mean that you're barred from attempting.
Okay.
But somebody either has to be the representative or everybody has to attend, has to take the class.
So how long, how long is the class?
It's like a, it's like 10 o'clock, 10:15 till what?
1:00 something.
1:00 something, yeah.
And where is it?
It's online.
It's online.
And Jacob, are you willing to be the council representative?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to plan on taking it, planning on taking it anyways.
So basically, if he's a representative, anybody on council still can take it if they wish to do so. But this, appointing a representative kind of bypasses everybody on council having to attend to take the class. So it's up to however council wants to do it.
Will you send us information on how?
Need just a motion to appoint Jacob if that's what council wishes to do.
Yep. So I'll make the motion. I mean, if you're willing to do that, I mean, I think it's good to have like, and then anybody else that wants to go, go, that's what I'm hearing.
I'll just forward the email from, it's through the auditors, state auditor's office. I'll forward all the council the email, have a sign up, and if you want to do it, you can do it.
Thank you for agreeing to do this, I nominate you.
Take a roll call vote. J.C.?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And then it sounds like we have to do another one here, right?
It has to be.
No, that's, we're just going for council.
But you also need to do officially in the minutes for Jen to do on the administrative side.
Yes.
I'll make a motion for Jen. Okay.
I'll second it.
Second.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, we have two representatives for the records retention class, Jacob and Jen for finance director. And again, anyone who wishes to take it still can do that. And he will send you the dates and everything and website, I guess. But, okay. We do have two people present this evening, Mr. Scott Belcastro and Mr. Jay Sell, in reference to the gas aggregation program. And they are here this evening to explain what their company's benefits to the city might be and answer any questions that you might have. And because it will be council's decision which of the two people attending these, or presenting these information this evening. And it'll be up to you to choose which of the two, or none at all. So at this time, I think there were some questions between, I think I'm first, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's first.
So anybody has any questions? He's going to make the presentation and we'll go from there and answer any questions that you guys might have. Okay, Scott, you're first. Scott represents Trebell Energy.
Hi, I'm Scott Belcastro of Trebell Energy. When it comes to energy aggregation programs, we focus on doing the right thing for your residents. With over 10 years of proven negotiating experience, Trebell has set a new standard in the governmental aggregation process, utilizing our proprietary RFP process. We have been able to capture the lowest rates available in the market. Our resident-first approach assures your community with low energy rates both now and in the future. Our in-house customer support team fields all income calls and can help with everything from questions on enrollment to pricing and even how to interpret your energy bill. Trebell is committed to educating your residents on aggregation and how to navigate this market. Our energy specialists regularly attend meetings at both the township and city level. This type of engagement allows Trebell to align our goals with your community's goals. Even more, the ongoing relationship enables a true partnership that ensures future success. This complete team approach has enabled Trebell to be successful with all types of communities, from small townships to larger cities. We can customize a solution to help your community reach their goals. A recent example of this success is Columbus, Ohio, where Trebell created a new website, Clean Energy Columbus, which helped us to deliver a 100% renewable energy deal over the next 13 years. What's more is the new Trebell portal which allows immediate access to all your community's data and information in a single place. Actual usage reports and trends along with current documentation is at your fingertips through a secure channel. Whether you're starting a new program or upgrading to a Trebell run program, our team of professionals will make the process easy. When you need help navigating this confusing energy market, reach out to Trebell. Let us show you that big decisions can be made easy. Trebell Energy, the proven choice.
Well, I swear to you that that really hits a lot more hard when you can see it, so. But my name is Scott Belcastro. I founded Trebell in 2010 and since 9/2010, we've gone on, probably become the second largest governmental aggregator in the state of Ohio. And we've run over now 160-plus programs of combined electric and natural gas programs, which is a lot of programs. One of the things that, when I started, Trebell was looking at what was out there, what existed. A lot of it had to do with people who were running their programs from the utility, you know, utility run subsidiary. And that became, I thought was rather bully to these communities like yours and needed someone's assistance to come in and help them kind of level that playing field. One of the things that we talk about in the video we've been is customer service. So at the end of the day, look, we can talk about rates, we can talk about solar, we can talk about gas, electric, whatever you want. But in a day, you have your residents calling you and having questions and getting through that. Trebell is, we do have our own in-house customer service team. And what does that mean? It means you can call me, I'm happy to answer your questions. You can call, your residents can call me directly, no problem, I'm available. Most, I even answer phones from time to time on Saturdays and Sundays. But I will just tell you that we do have Monday through Friday, people within our office answering, answering your residents' questions. And I think at the end of the day, their job, I've instructed them to do whatever it takes to get them where they need to go. That's the most important thing. At the end of the day, if you call a supplier on their toll-free number, what do you get? You may not get where you need to be, you'll get the supplier's best answer. We touch on competitive low rates for Trebell. And since we've been doing this, our process has produced a very strong outcome, time and time again. And what does that mean? What is a strong outcome to you? We get good terms and conditions, which believe it or not, are negotiated heavily. But look, at the end of the day, we've set some of the lowest rates in the market, specifically like AEP. I think we set the lowest market for an aggregation years ago, 4.39, I think it was what it was. We had multiple communities that received that rate. And I think, I believe that some of the communities even up here in Belmont received that rate. In Ohio Edison, I think we set the second lowest rate. And we've been doing this over and over and over over the years. So the good thing is for you as council is that you can rely on our process, our RFP process, to get you to lower rates as well as a solid program that you know isn't being skewed towards one vendor or another. In this case, since we're talking about natural gas, I'll skip over the renewable energy part of it, but we do have, I'll just point out this out. Let's just say that the city decides they want to do renewable energy. We can get involved in that. We've been doing this for a number of years. Whether it's just getting renewable energy credits, right, to make your electric green and/or if you guys have a piece of property or your municipal buildings that you want to put solar on, you can come talk to me about it. Well-versed in this stuff, been doing it a long time. So definitely would like to speak with you if you have, have an interest in that. Trebell, we have proprietary software and portal that keeps customers informed. Who's the customer? In this case, it's you, you or the mayor. You guys can use our portal, get to answers quickly. And for us, it's a huge competitive advantage. Most other companies don't do it. It takes a ridiculous amount of time and money to invest into these portals and data, which is a ton of data. But we have all this built. We've been working on it for a great number of years. Rather than being in the dark about what your program is, it's clicks of the button. You'll know exactly what it is. Our pre-process, what is that? Request for proposals when we go out to look for natural gas for your program. It is also run through our proprietary software. Our proposals are all done in a very controlled manner. And again, it is part of the reason, part of the reason you can't fudge it, you can't skew the numbers, you can't work with another supplier and skew it towards them. The numbers come in, they sit where they are, and we make sure that we present the information to you in a fair manner. When we talked in our video about making things easier for you, we have, we've taken a lot of steps which, you know, throughout the years to make sure that every time your customer touches us or has a question for you, there's a process for that. And we make it easy for them to either get in, get out, move to another program, whatever it is they want to do. Add solar to their home. We have a process for this. And we, it allows us to cut down on complaints to all of you, which is super helpful. Community involvement. We've been around for a long time. I guess I've grown the company large enough. Some companies drive revenue, some of them are a shop where you've got to just keep dredging out business, meeting on people. But for me, it's always been, we're going to do the right thing, we're going to deliver on our promises to you. And from that, I hope, from that I hope that we'll retain your business and prove to you what, why we're the best. Part of that too involves community involvement. We definitely get out, for example, out in Sugar Creek, it was a township that was desperately needing to get a defibrillator. We jumped in in a hurry. I don't like that, we don't like to just give money to people for the sake of giving money to them. But we do jump in, help provide some assistance there, save two lives the next day. I will tell you, that feels pretty good as a business owner to be able to help out in those scenarios. We provide funding for local playgrounds, et cetera. I will tell you, my understanding is that this community did receive a community grant funding. We can continue to receive community grant funding for St. Clairsville, that's not a problem. We just have to sit down and discuss what it is, how much it is, and what it is you want to get done with it. So that's, that's just part of our, part of our program. As I've already mentioned, we do have a great deal of programs in this region. So I'm up here quite a bit. We have almost every single township, many, many villages up in Jefferson County. I think we've got four different communities here in Belmont County and we continue to be one of the only companies that is, that continues to grow. So in this, in this very difficult market. So look, I've been, I've been talking to, you know, I think we believe we work with Rayland up here as well. Been trying to talk to you guys for quite a long time. I've always thought it was in the best interest for us to be working directly with you to give you a third-party independent opinion about things. Since the other company went away, we've seen this year prices go up almost 300% on natural gas. And I can guarantee you that people are feeling it, we're hearing it, the calls are coming in. And I will just tell you one of the benefits of my getting calls at our shop versus at the supplier shop is that we're at the forefront of hearing where the problems are. And we can react very quickly. It's really to your benefit to cut down on complaints, fix problems quickly, and get to your residents and help them. So with that, I will, I'm going to pause, take some questions from everybody and hopefully we'll get you the right answers.
Okay, we'll start off here with Don LaMonica. Do you have any questions at this point that you want to ask?
Yes, sir.
Kristi, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Karen, do you have any questions? Dawn, do you have any questions?
So you would be a single supplier for St. Clairsville?
So let's clarify, we are a consultant broker which represents you independently. And we will go out to the market with our, with our request for proposals and get, and bring to you all those different options that you can choose.
Because like right now, customers have, I don't know, I could be wrong on this, a variety of choices who their supplier would be?
We would bring you one single supplier at the end of the day. You don't, it gets kind of messy when you have too many suppliers trying to vie for that, you know, serving one community. Yeah.
So then you would work with like Columbia?
I would work with, so Columbia, we'll call that the utility. Then you have suppliers and then we're the third party. We're kind of making sure everything's working in between all that. And then you, you the city, you know, that's the, that's the, a lot of value right there. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Beth, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I had just have a couple. Where's the company at?
We're in Richland County, right near Mansfield, yeah.
And where else in Belmont are you? You said four other places, remember?
Is it Richland, Poltonie, Peace?
Oh, different townships.
Townships, yeah. And then we work with up north, Tiltonsville, Rayland, I can't even remember, there's two more right in that vicinity.
And how did you get the name for your company?
It's an interesting question. I have a good friend of mine and from childhood, he was a, he was a web developer and we wanted to do sign-ups through the internet. His name was Trinka, my name was Bel Castro. Bel, Trebell, we took the part of our names.
Thank you, thanks.
Beth, any other questions?
I'm good at the moment.
Beth, do you have any questions?
Linda, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, mine have been answered.
Okay, anybody else think of anything at this point they want you to ask?
President, if you don't mind, I have one more thing to add. I did take the liberty of looking at what you guys have done in the past. We reviewed that information. I've looked at your current status on your natural gas governmental aggregators license and I believe that it's coming through at the end of the month, meaning it's underwater in a way. So it needs to get done, you need probably help doing that. I've taken the liberty of creating the application for you already and we're prepared regardless of whether we win or not to take care of this tomorrow for you to make sure it doesn't get, it doesn't lapse. That creates additional problems, so we just want to make sure we're on top of it for you.
And when, when decision, I mean, we're going to hear the proposal.
Right, we're going to hear the proposal from Madison.
We're not expected to make a decision on any of these tonight, are we?
It's up to you guys. We don't, if you feel comfortable, you should make one tonight. If not, you can kind of kick it around and we can do it at the next meeting or public special, if need be. When, when should this be done?
Well, the license is due at the end of October.
October.
So that can be done, but this can still be a decision that's made whenever. It's just been forever since Volunteer went bankrupt.
Volunteer Energy is the one that used to do this for us. They were back every two years and Larry Taylor was the one who represented Volunteer, but they unfortunately went bankrupt.
Yeah.
So they're a non-existence now, so we have to come up with a different.
All I would just say to you is it will be easier if we address this sooner than later, okay? So I want to just make sure that it's, it's up, it'll buy you time to do what you need to do, so.
You know, just interested in one, you said you've been trying to get in front of us for a long time. What do you mean by that?
Oh, well, what I meant by that, you know, I called on St. Clairsville a long time ago, but you guys have been using Volunteer for a long time. And frankly, Volunteer did a great job for a lot of different communities. You know, I like to say that there's value in having a third party involved. And in the event, as we've seen here recently, you know, with Volunteer going out of business, we could, we could have jumped in or we would have been in place to help you through that, guide you through that process. And with rates going up the way they did so steeply, so quickly, I handed out to each one of you kind of a natural gas rates sheet. You can see the incredible steep curve and, you know, go back to '21, January of '21, price of natural gas was 24 cents. You can go back, just not even that farther back from that, it was 17 cents a CCF. And then obviously, it was at 93 cents only just a few weeks ago. So in just that short a time, everybody, as of today, and I think I got that second graph on there just so you could see the, how quickly it's gone down. So it went to 93 cents-ish and now we're today at 59 cents trading. I mean, that's, what is that, a 59% decrease in the cost of a natural gas? Look, things are getting more volatile, we know this for sure. I know this with total certainty. We're, I was a corporate banker, I deal in risk, that's what you do, you control risk at all, at all times. And this is one of those things that's become more risky when rates are moving more volatile. So that's what my goal is, to help contain that volatility through our process.
How do you contain it?
How do you contain it? You enter into smart contracts, smartly contracts, not just, you know, people think that the price of gas and electrics is always like, oh, well, here's a, here's a rate that's less, you know. If the utility's at eight cents, ours is six, so we beat everybody, maybe. There's tariffs, term, the length of the agreement, knowing all the things that go on behind the scenes and regulatory risk, right, as well as political risk. So there's a great number of things that we try to think about as we enter into each one of our agreements.
So do you like lock it in at like 60 cents for the whole year?
We could, but we could. It just depends on what we think long-term, we're seeing if it makes sense to do a longer agreement or a shorter agreement.
Third parties have never really, it costs more to get through a third party. Instead of dealing directly with them, you go directly to them, you're going to get a better price because you have to make money.
Yeah, so that's a policy in my, in my world. One of the things that we do, remember I just mentioned that we work with lots and lots of communities in here? Well, we, when we bring, I do the work, if you work with Volunteer, they're going to work with you directly. Why isn't Volunteer set the lowest rate in the market? And I've done it probably six times. Well, I'm just saying.
So, they're non-existent now, so we have to come up with a different.
All I would just say to you is, it will be easier if we address this sooner than later, okay? So, I want to just make sure that it's, it's up. It'll buy you time to do what you need to do, so.
You know, just interested in one, you said you've been trying to get in front of us for a long time. What do you mean by that?
Oh, well, what I meant by that, you know, I had called on St. Clairsville a long time ago, but you guys have been using Volunteer for a long time, and frankly, Volunteer did a great job for a lot of different communities. You know, I like to say that there's value in having a third party involved, and in the event, as we've seen here recently, you know, with Volunteer going out of business, we could, we could have jumped in, or we would have been in place to help you through that, guide you through that process. And with rates going up the way they did so steeply, so quickly, I handed out to each one of you kind of a natural gas rates sheet. You can see the incredible steep curve, and, you know, go back to '21, January of '21, price of natural gas was 24 cents. You can go back, just not even that farther back from that, it was 17 cents a CCF. And then, obviously, it was at 93 cents only just a few weeks ago. So, in just that short a time, everybody, as of today, and I think I got that second graph on there, just so you could see the, how quickly it's gone down, so it went to 93 cents-ish, and now we're today at 59 cents trading. I mean, that's, what is that, a 59% decrease in the cost of a natural gas? Look, things are getting more volatile. We know this for sure. I know this with total certainty. We're, I was a corporate banker. I deal in risk. That's what you do. You control risk at all, at all times, and this is one of those things that's become more risky when rates are moving more volatily. So, that's what my goal is, to help contain that volatility through our process.
How do you contain it?
How do you contain it? You enter into smart contracts, smartly contracts, not just, you know, people think that the price of gas and electrics is always like, oh, well, here's a, here's a rate that's less, you know? If the utility's at eight cents, ours is six, so we beat everybody, maybe. There's tariffs, term, the length of the agreement, knowing all the things that go on behind the scenes, and regulatory risk, right, as well as political risk. So, there's a great number of things that we try to think about as we enter into each one of our agreements.
So, do you like lock it in at like 60 cents for the whole year?
We could, but we couldn't. It just depends on what we think long-term we're seeing, if it makes sense to do a longer agreement or a shorter agreement.
Third parties have never really, it costs more to get through a third party. Instead of dealing directly with them, you get directly to them, you're gonna get a better price because you have to make money.
Yep. So, that's a policy in my world. One of the things that we do, remember I just mentioned that we work with lots and lots of communities in here? Well, we, when we bring, I do the work. If you work with Volunteer, they're gonna work with you directly. Why isn't Volunteer set the lowest rate in the market? And I've done it probably six times. Well, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a, it's a, Phil, it's kind of a question to just get in your mind thinking. How could that even happen? If you were working directly with the supplier, Lord knows, you should be able to get the lowest rate in the market. It doesn't happen like that, because here's what really goes on. Suppliers take the increase. They don't give it to, anything that the broker leaves out, the supplier's gonna take it. We will always, we're always here independently working for you. I will go out at the right time, hopefully. I'm not telling I'm perfect. I make mistakes. Fully willing to admit that. We will think about the market, the timing of when we go out to market, the timing of when we end your program, all these different things, okay? So, there's a great number of factors that go into it. It doesn't work like when you, like what you're thinking about in the, there's no problem with the middleman. How many, Angie, raise your hand, please, if you use an independent insurance agent? I know I do. All right? Yeah. Why don't you just go to Progressive Insurance or State Farm on your own?
Some times they're cheaper.
Well, well, there's my point.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm being funny, so.
Yeah, no, you'd be here 100%, right, so.
How much does your service cost the city?
It depends, you know, we're making roughly a, you know, call it a nickel, the seven, seven cents a CCF. Just depends on what, what's being asked of us. And then it depends on the CCF, how much is used, et cetera, weather, and all other things. We get, as you probably know, we get paid based on usage. You know, if you have no usage, we get paid nothing. I've done a lot of work. And then we take care of, as you know, all of your quarterly filing, or pardon me, your annual filings, and making sure that these types of things don't happen for you, so that we're, so that you are protected.
Thank you.
You bet.
Normally, how many suppliers do you work with? Like for St. Clairsville, how many suppliers you think would?
Right now, it's been dwindling down further and further, but we're still probably at about five or six different suppliers. I mean, we've been able to work with a number of suppliers that have either gotten, either gone out of business, like a Volunteer. They were a great company for a good 10 years, okay? Made some very bad decisions at the end, but some got bought out, you know what I'm saying? Some just exited, but we're always trying to improve the number of suppliers. It improves the pricing for you. Less suppliers is an oligopoly, and oligopoly is never good for anybody.
Any other questions?
All right, well, thank you.
Good, thank you, Scott.
Yep, you bet.
You wanna stick around here after Mr. Sales presents his email? The guys may want to have some process questions to compare, and they may have some other things to add.
No worries.
Okay, at this time, ask me for Jay Sel, Massbin Energy. He will make his presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, Council, Mayor Ballman, Council President Valas, all of the council. I really appreciate you guys having us involved in your process. I'm gonna be as brief as possible while trying to answer as many questions as I can, just kind of filling you in on who we are, why we would be a good partner for the city, and what might be some differences between us and other folks out there. So, Aspen's been around since 2020. I've been working with Aspen for 15 years, so I've got a lot of experience in the industry. I've been doing aggregations for about eight years here in the state of Ohio. We work with the top suppliers out there, as well as Mr. Bel Castro does. He does a fine job as well. So, you know, there's, there's really a pretty limited number of participants out there in the energy aggregation consulting group, and Trebell and Aspen are definitely one of the, one of the few that do a good job and communities have had success with. So, that said, some things that are, that will set us apart, first of all, is we are coming to you all with a fixed price. We're coming with a price that you can lock in energy today. So, if you choose to enter into an agreement, it is an indicative price. We would need to refresh it and get executable pricing for you, but I was able to run indicative numbers today based on today's market. Market was down almost 50 points today, so it's a great time to take advantage right now when the market drops. If you were looking at a January start, it'd be 76.5 cents per CCF. So, that's fixed. It's a 36-month contract. Our fees are embedded in that rate, so there's nothing additional from us at all. If you were to wait through the winter and lock it for April when prices drop, it'd be 73.5 cents per CCF. So, you know, our take on it right now is, hey, a lot of people are hurting. Inflation's way up. This would give people an opportunity to save money here this winter. Last month was 85 cents with Columbia Gas of Ohio. So, I don't know what the sheet says there, but it was at 85 cents. So, I think the sheet that was handed out is actually just a NYMEX. You have to add 16.5 cents per CCF to each of those numbers that you see there to get to what the actual number is. So, for Columbia Gas of Ohio, what we're competing with is the standard choice offer, okay, which is the NYMEX settlement on the third-to-last business day of the month plus 16.5 cents per CCF. So, that's, that's what the market is actually at right now. So, what you were given, you gotta add 16 and a half cents to get to where we're actually at to talk apples to apples, okay? As far as customer service goes, you can, you're gonna have the supplier to be able to call, so there's always gonna be a number toll-free that folks can reach out to on their bill. You will also have me personally, and I take the calls myself. So, if you call me, if somebody calls me, I'll leave, I'll get back to voicemails. I answer emails myself and handle all of these myself, and I take a lot of pride in making sure that we, you know, make communities happy, have residents be happy, and that you all want to continue working with us. So, as far as suppliers go, there's a very small amount of suppliers right now that are competitive and that are willing to go out on an RFP process and provide competitive bids. So, it's a small group. We've got it identified down to one supplier right now that will do fixed-price contracts, offer it up, work with Columbia Gas of Ohio to be able to figure out the situation and get you fixed pricing that you need. There's not a lot of suppliers out there that'll do it today. So, we've only found one that's doing it right now. Because the Columbia Gas of Ohio system, with how they work with aggregators right now, it's just kind of difficult to get things done and to have contracts actually come through and get finalized. So, that's a little bit of background on the market itself. If you look at what's going on with the market, volatility is at sky-high right now. A lot of communities out there have entered into legislation locally where they have a strike price, and they say, hey, once we hit this strike price, let's enter into contract, okay? So, one thing that you could all do is to move to strike once you get to the prices that are in front of you. So, you could say, hey, you know, once we get to this, because they're indicative numbers, I can't lock tomorrow on them, I need to refresh, is to say, hey, you know, once we get to 76 and a half cents for a January start, we lock, okay? You pass legislation like that for the mayor, or, you know, whoever handles those contracts, I think it will probably be the mayor in this instance, it's different for different charters, but have the mayor be able to enter into contract once it gets to that number, okay? As far as communities we work with, Trebell works with a lot. They do. They're huge. So, they do a good job on what they do. They work in a large scope. We also work with large communities and local communities. We work with Village of Bridgeport here in Belmont County. We actually do both their gas and electric aggregation programs. We work with City of Marysville in Union County, not on aggregation yet. They're not comfortable in jumping into that, but we help them with their city meters, both gas and electric. We work with City of Shelby in Richland County, who is an amp community, as you guys are. So, the John Ensmann, the utility director over there, is my contact. I've worked with him for seven years on this stuff. So, if you have questions about us, feel free to reach out to them. They're a really good reference. We are also working with City of Shaker Heights right now on administering their own 100% renewable aggregation program. So, quite a few different communities around the state that we're working with at this time. So, we can work with the big guys as well. That's pretty much it. I mean, it's, the real difference is, we're willing to come with a fixed price for you tonight and say, hey, you know, it is an indicative price, so I will need to refresh it, but, you know, you guys could pass legislation that says that, hey, once we can do this and we can execute it, we do it, and we take that job, and take that savings that's there today compared to the 85 cents that Columbia was at last month. So, that's, that's our proposal. It's pretty straightforward. I'm definitely happy to answer any questions that you have at all, and, you know, I'd love to be able to do business with you all and create a relationship that you guys like working with me. You like, you know, calling me up if you have questions, and you like how we handle the community. So, I'll leave that open to the floor here for questions. Again, I thank you very much for allowing me to get up and present here today.
Good, thanks, Mr. Sel. We'll start the other end, just work the way around.
Do you have a question? Let's say we're locked in at that 76, 76.5. Let's say by some miracle, it's much lower. Do we get that lower rate?
You don't get the-
Or we're just totally locked in?
Yeah, you're locked in, but there's exit ramps. So, say we lock in at 76 and a half cents, and the war in Ukraine ends, and everything goes back to normal, okay? And the market plummets, okay? The exit ramps would be folks can opt out at any time. So, anytime anybody wants to opt out, they can, for free, at no cost. And you can give them my number. I'll handle the opt-outs myself if you want, okay? They'll also have a toll-free number on their bill that they can call and get out of the program. The other exit ramp is called a blend and extend for the whole community to make. So, as you get down the road, you get, say, it's a 36-month agreement, you get, you know, a year and a half into the contract, you can look at blending down the rate and extending the term. It's called blend and extend. So, there's two ways that folks could either opt out on their own, or the community can look at a blend and extend if the market were to drop. Otherwise, you're giving people an option to have a fixed, long-term, set rate that they can opt out of at any time. So, you're really kind of giving them the best of both worlds, in my opinion.
And I think Mr. Bel Castro mentioned that his customer service is a live person, correct?
It's a live person if- Yes.
We need to call customer service. Is yours the same, or is it automated?
Uh, no, it's me. So, you know, I'll give my cell phone number. If folks want to call me and have a question, they can call the office, and I'll answer, you know, voicemails. I'll take emails, you know, I'll respond to emails personally, and I do it during the weekends, off-hours all the time, you know? Or you can give them my card, you can write my cell phone number on there, and I'll take people's calls myself.
Thank you.
Mike, do you have questions?
No questions.
Beth, do you have any questions?
So, just a couple. Thank you for coming. Is this national, this map that I'm seeing here? It's just a-
Uh, yeah, we're everywhere that's deregulated. So, anywhere that's deregulated, we do business. As far as aggregation, we focus on Ohio. So, we do, we do local aggregation in the state of Ohio. But, yeah, everywhere that's deregulated, we do natural gas, electricity, demand response, renewables. We do pretty much the whole gamut. I focus on aggregation as an aggregation specialist, but I've got customers of every type of business that I work with.
And I thought you started with the, Aspen started in 2020, it was 20, 2000?
2000. Yeah, sorry about that.
Nope.
Yeah, it's 2000. We celebrated 20 years.
Yeah, that's how we see that in water.
A year or two ago, sorry about that.
To make any sense?
Yeah, it's what we're on.
And just to be fair, is the name after the mountains?
Uh, it's actually after the Aspen Tree. Our founder liked the Aspen Tree. So, you know, I like the village, the mountains. I'm born in Colorado, so I prefer that take, but yeah, it's the Aspen Tree.
So, the 76.5 cents locked in, if we did this, we'd be locked in in January. So, what do we pay now? And would it fluctuate until?
Yeah.
I haven't seen lately.
So, this, this month is 85 cents.
So, right now, are we not locked into anything because of volunteer? Because our money is banked. So, our rates are fluctuating because we're not locked in. So, you're saying we could get locked in as early as January?
Yeah.
At that amount?
Yep. That's as of today, again, market volatility is sky-high, so I need to refresh. That's why I recommend that you do legislation that allows the mayor to sign a contract when we get to that number, because we were there today. Are we gonna be tomorrow morning? I don't know. It's literally that, that volatile, is that we, you know, I, historically, I would come to you with a fixed price, and I would say, hey, here's what we can get. Legislation would be passed, the next day, we would execute, and everything would be fine. With today's volatility, we could literally be underwater the next day. So, that's, that's kind of why, where we're at with, with our recommendations and trying to get something done for everyone.
And if the war ended and the prices went down, you're saying individuals could opt out?
Correct.
And then, but the city would not?
No, the city could, the city would still have the program. You would have that fixed rate for the amount of time that you contract for. However, you could look at a blend and extend if the market were to drop, and you got far enough into the contract to extend the term and drop the rate down. So, that would be an option for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You say that you maintain solid relationships with some of the large publicly traded retail energy companies. Who are some of those companies?
That we have solar relationships with?
Uh, gas.
Oh, gas relationships? We work with all the large suppliers out there. So, AEP Energy, Constellation, Energy Harbor, Direct Energy Business, Champion. You go through the list of the top, you know? We have, we have about 20 suppliers that we work with. As Mr. Bel Castro was saying, the list of ones that are good at aggregation and that are active in the market right now is a handful. That's it.
Okay, and then if a citizen wanted to leave, they would go back to the utility company?
Yeah, they opt out at any time. They have to go back to the utility if they want to choose to go do something else, they can. They could always go on Apples to Apples, the website that Guko put together, to choose. You know, I looked at it today, and this 76.5 is lower than any like-term offer on Apples to Apples. To me, that's a huge part of this whole thing, is, hey, you can get out of it at any time, but, you know, we did the work to try and get you the best deal that we possibly could today, and it's there for you. So, if you go on Apples to Apples tonight, you'll see 75.65 for 36 months with no early termination fee beats every offer out there behind Columbia. Thank you. Thank you.
Karen, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Kristi?
My question's worth answering. Thank you.
Jay Se.
Yep. So, if we do lock in at 76.5, and say somebody wants to opt out, a citizen, can they get back in?
Yeah, you can jump in and out as many times as you want. You just have to wait for the amount of time that it takes for Columbia to get you on their billing. So, if you drop out, it might take a month or two for Columbia Gas to pick you back up. If you come back in, it might take a month or two for you to get back in. There's just, you know, time that it takes to deal with the utilities.
And what is your price per CCF that you're making?
Our fee, our fees on this quote was seven cents an MCF.
Seven cents.
Okay.
And if we pass this down to legislation, is that every citizen's automatically in that?
No. So, this is how it works with aggregation. All the folks that have already chose a supplier on their own through the customer choice program, all those folks stay on contract, whatever they're on, right? They can always get out of that. They have to check for early termination fees. They can, they can get out of that, that program at any time and opt into our program, okay? The only folks that we're gonna affect with this are the ones that are with Columbia Gas of Ohio on the standard choice offer, just the standard choice offer customers. So, if they haven't picked, and the, it went through the auction process, you know, they're on the standard choice offer, which Columbia actually doesn't even serve, they don't, they don't actually go out and buy gas anymore. They just distribute it. There's an auction process, there's winners of that auction, and those suppliers supply the gas to, to the customers. So, Columbia still is going to bill it, they're still going to do meter reads, they're still going to do everything they do today. You would just see a fixed price on the bill and the name of the supplier. That's the only difference.
And what do you think it's going to get down to 73 percent or 73 cents in April?
That's what, as of today, if we did an April start, because the, as, as the futures are traded, December, January, February, March are considerably higher than April. So, if you start in April and you go out 36 months from there, it'd be 73.5 today. So, that's just saying, hey, do we want a little bit lower rate and just kind of bite the bullet this winter? Or do we want to get this thing started in January and pay a little bit higher rate? That's what your decision ultimately is if you go fixed.
What, to start in January, when do we have to make the decision by?
Uh, let's see. I just did a, a December start behind Columbia today. So, you know, I, I would say probably within, within a month. I mean, we would like to be able to move sooner than that. You know, honestly, ideally, we'd move within a couple of weeks, but we could probably push it all the way out to potentially a month. The sooner the better, as Mr. Vel Castro said. Energy markets are, the volatility is extremely high. When you're dealing with a fixed-price product like we're talking about, you got to move soon to get what's, what's in front of you. So, yeah, I definitely recommend moving sooner than later and I'm happy to answer any questions to, to make you all feel good about the move that you're making and, and give you some background on why, why it's the right time to do it.
I, I just wondered, if you guys end up taking a ban because of the volatility and say the market goes way up beyond 76, do you have an out in the contract too? Are you locked in to take that ban?
That's a great question. There's no back taken. The supplier literally buys the energy the day that the contract is signed. So, the contract is signed, we're consultants, right? So, we have our piece of it and Mr. Vel Castro was correct as well. The piece is going to be there regardless of whether or not a broker or consultant is involved or if you're going straight to the supplier. The supplier just keeps the whole piece or they give us a portion of it, okay? So, the, the hedge is actually made that day. So, if you guys were to say, hey, yes, let's pass legislation tonight to do 76.5 cents January start, tomorrow, I would go to suppliers and try and get the deal done tomorrow, right? They would literally hedge the energy tomorrow and get it done if we were able to do it. So, there's no risk out there on our part or theirs because they go in at the cost of energy, they have a profit on it, they hedge it, it's done. So, there's no risk involved, really, for either parties at that point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Does anybody else have any questions? Any cross-question?
I got one more and it could be for both of you. Changing the subject, how does your solar work where you would sell into our grid system? Or is that a possibility?
Uh, we don't really do solar on an individual level at all, so we, we don't do like house-based solar at all. We have relationships with large companies that will do solar projects where it could be either community solar, Illinois right now is, is big because there's a lot of incentives there in Illinois right now, or they would do rooftop on like large-scale facilities, but we, we really don't work with solar and, and natural gas aggregation, combining those two at all. We do renewable energy credits on, on renewable aggregations for communities that have that interest and have that leaning to, to go green. We do assist communities with that, but natural gas aggregation, you know, isn't really set up to, to be that way.
I just, just trying to understand this apples-to-apples thing, right? So, you're saying we could lock in with Aspen and for January, 76 and a half cents, right?
Correct.
But to make that kind of a, and I think, Mr. Vel Castro, you're not saying this is the pressure, you're just showing this average here, but to make that make sense, you would take this 66 cents and add 16 cents to that, right?
Yeah, so the utility's at 61.65. Whatever you see on that sheet, add .165 to it. So, that's what, uh, that's how you get to the total number for the month. That's how you guys are paying today because volunteer went away, you've defaulted back to Columbia's default rate, as we'll call it, and that's, use that as a NYMEX only plus then the adder, the utility's adder, .165, combine them, that's the all-in price.
So, that's not your price?
That is not my price. No, I didn't know we were going to do prices even though I did bring pricing tonight. So, I think one left, as usual, is one, I don't even want to get started on it, but one thing that gets left out of this conversation is all those things that he asked about. What's, you know, we're, we're a lot of discussion here tonight about price. So, I'm going to throw you guys a little bit of a loop here. I think a three-year deal is the worst idea ever, just as I think a four-year deal is a horrible electric idea. We're seeing prices right now in the last three weeks, what did I tell you? Plummet. So, by all means, you could let, you could lock into this three-year deal right now and you're trying to capture some of the cheaper pricing. But look, this whole curve moves up and down. It's not just, oh, out here it went down. The whole curve's moving up and down. So, with Aspen's proposal, I would tell you that potentially by the end of next year, you'd be in a bad deal, all right? So, I would suggest something a little shorter so you can redo it between now and then because there are going to be, there have been pricing in our markets for which there's no explanation for why it's been held up this high, this long. Ukraine is a, is a, that's a, is a distraction, it's an excuse for why it's up. It's not the reason why it's being held up. So, we can, I mean, that's a whole other day if you want to do that, that conversation. But I think a three-year deal is going to be, sounds great today and then it may be in a year and a half, two years, it's going to be terrible. I, our programs, we're one of the people who fought all the suppliers to have no early termination going forward. I'm not telling you we were the first, but I, I, I floated that idea out there to all the suppliers, they all pushed back, they said no. I got one of them to bite on it and all the programs practically in Ohio are now that way. So, this is, there's a lot more going on than just price. Don't get fixated on price. As Jay has told you, he's quoting a price, it's called indicative, it's there until it's not there. If the market moves, which he's also right, it can move by noon tomorrow and it's gone. So, or it can move down as it did today. What it moved to, 7%?
Moved about 50 cents, just over 50.
Yeah, 7% in one day. So, he may have come back to you, hopefully, and said, I'm keeping my margin where it's at and I'm going to pass the savings along to you because guess what? The market came down. I think this is a really tricky situation. My position is I think long is terrible. Long is terrible.
DC?
And what is your proposal, like how long? A year, six months?
In, in an ideal world, I'd do a year. You can't by law, PUCO regulations do less than 12 months. We're kind of handcuffed by that. But, you know, given, if you want a decent rate that you can kind of work into, I do have, I do have a fixed-rate two-year program, I think it's 71 cents or, yeah, 71 cents that you could do. So, you know, that's, that's an option for you. My program would only get better if you go out longer, you know, on that, from that standpoint. Actually, I take that back. My rate is not that. It is 70, uh, 74 cents on a two-year deal. I was thinking April start, I apologize. And the only reason what, what he's saying here to you is, look, if you start today, every single month has a rate associated with it. The ones today through December, January, and February are very high, so that lifts the overall rate. If you start in April, we can get you a much lower rate, okay? I'm just, I'm a little more conservative in my approach. I told you guys, I'm not here to sell you anything, I just want to make sure it gets to the right place.
So, what was your rate today?
74 cents, I think is what it's 74. Yep, and we can start that, December start, but just going to be hard to get, by the way. No, I'm serious. You have 45 days, you have 21 days to, to file your opt-outs, you have 10 days if you do that beforehand. So, it's 10 days with the PUCO, 21 days for it to go out, and then you need in Columbia, typically 15 days on top of that. It's almost an impossibility, guys, tonight, to do a December start. It's a January start. I don't care how you look at it.
So, we counted real quick. I shopped it today and I saw 24-month prices too. There's nothing under 80 cents out there on a 24-month price. So, I don't know what suppliers being utilized here, but it's not any of the ones that I'm looking at. And there's really only one supplier that's doing this right now, that's giving fixed prices to be able to take to communities and they were above 80 cents today on a 24-month price. So, you know, I'm coming to you with an offer in writing of an actual price that we can go get.
I have one, I have, it's in writing. I got it right here on my phone.
Right, but I mean, mine was on my proposal, one I can. So, I have that typed up today and put my name on it and gave it to you guys. So, what I have is real, like it's, it's there and it wasn't going to change regardless of what, you know, was presented here.
But you said it could change tomorrow?
Correct, based on the market.
Technically, right.
Based on the market, correct. But when I came here to present, I was all in.
I have another supplier too on top of that, his rates were terrible, but I did it in Haiti, you know what I'm saying? So, it wasn't that good. But I'm just, it was in writing today, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we were going to do it. I did it as an adjusting case to make sure I was prepared, but I didn't know we were going to throw rates out today. I can deliver just on this, it's as good as in writing, all right? So, we've done, we've done pass that.
I have one question and that's, I know council is not prepared to make any decisions this evening. We're talking about January starts or possibly a December start. Our next council meeting is Monday, November 7th. If the decision was made by them, would that be soon enough to get those two starts uh, in January or December?
I mean, today is, it's, I mean, unless you went crazy to get, to get that done, I don't, I just, I think it'd be too hard to get it done.
I'm, I'm trying to just figure basically whether we want to discuss this off and on or whether they want to have a special meeting to sit down with the entire council to discuss the decision. I don't, the, anybody on council have any other questions? DC?
Is this something we can go to executive session for to discuss between us?
It's actually, I don't think there's an exception for it.
I'm trying to think. I don't know what sort of either one.
In fact, I, I would want more, I mean, I'm not opposed to that if we're alive, but I would want more time to really-
Yeah, I'm, I'm not ready for-
But I mean, I don't think we, I mean, I'd want to move by, you know, later than the next council meeting.
Right.
You know, we have your contact information, so if we have further questions, we certainly could get ahold of you, but, you know, I feel like, you know, I would, I think I would want to look at the January start date because that's when it gets really cold and if this could be beneficial to people if it's fluctuating. I just, just having this information tonight, I'm just, we could go to executive session, but I'm not going to be prepared.
Okay, I think both gentlemen stated that they have phone numbers that you can call them direct. If you have any questions in the meantime?
Yeah, for sure.
I think a book to their presentation, if you, if you guys want to think about what you heard here this evening, if you come up with any questions for either or both of the company, you'll have their names and phone numbers, you can contact them and hopefully we can be prepared to make a decision for next company.
Scott, I don't say contact number.
I have some business cards for you for just this occasion.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Jay, I have yours.
Great.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mary, do you have one? Yes, she does. Either one of you guys want to say anything else?
Other than just, you know, this is a decision, we're, we're both working from the same market, same pool, hopefully, you know? I know we've got what we have in terms of our pool of suppliers, but I'm just saying we both go into the same market, right? So, really, these decisions, when I hear about, oh, we're going to sit here and make a decision on rate, it's a fool's game. Make a decision on, you're, you're either married to him or me and you want to make sure his company does the right thing all the time. That's the important part here. Make sure you're thinking about the service and all those things, it's not just rate.
Right, and just one closing thing real quick, you know? I think what you're going to see in a proposal from Mr. Vel Castro, you know, coming into tonight was actually for a variable rate. I don't think there was actually a fixed price on the table at all. It's just jumped into a fixed price now that we've got to this point of the discussion, it seems to me. So, you know, if my approach is to come with a fixed price, say, hey, here's what we can do for you, folks can opt out of it at any time if they want, okay? You can try and get something started here for January and it's, it's not exclusive. So, if you don't pick me today, if, if you, if you pick me today or whenever you guys decide to do it and you want to do it and we don't get a contract locked in, you're not locked in to Aspen. We're not asking for an exclusive contract, okay? I believe from, from prior experience, you would be signing an exclusive agreement with Trevell. So, you would be signing exclusive agreement without that fixed-price offer that, that came to you in writing tonight from me. And there's no exclusive contract with us at all outside of the supplier. It's just the supplier contract that you have, nothing exclusive with Aspen. So, I think that's the difference between the two.
Tell them thank you very much for your time and answering questions and again, if council members have any questions, they will have your phone numbers and, again, our, our next council meeting is the 7th, so your questions should all be to them prior to that and hopefully come prepared with who you wish to consider as the company to go with. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to this time to the reports. Mary, do you have a book?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Jim. Again, there's a lot going on in the city. I participated in an audio call with Jeff Vaughn and Jeremy regarding water projects. Got a lot of groundwork that needs to be laid yet. We met with Danielle Mason from the Attorney General's Office this week. She was here to bring grant opportunities to light for, for the police department and Chief Arvins is already on it for any equipment needs he has for the department. Jeremy was also in there. She was here to find out about the tremendous job our department did, not only in getting a pedophile off the street, but in finding a missing child. She will be sending this report along to the Attorney General so Mr. Yost will know what an outstanding department we have. We have much to be proud of in our police department. Mrs. Mason was also very impressed that our chief reached out to the school, got them to pay for half the cost of the door breaching tool and that it is now available if it's ever needed. We had a meeting with Wendy Anderson in the chamber to review upcoming city events. City will be participating in the Christmas parade on Sat, Sunday, November 20th at 2:00. I believe the rec department will be decorating the gator again and hopefully we will not have a repeat of last year's parade in the Typhoon. And I wanted to bring something to the attention of our citizens, especially those who so generously offered to volunteer time to redo the, redo the bathrooms at the rec center. We all know that the bathrooms have needed some TLC, but the needs are beyond surface TLC. We believe there's a break in the water line, although I know Mr. Pytrantin had, had camered it, I'm sure Jeremy will mention that. And some of these things need to be addressed before superficial refresh happens. And if it's not done correctly, we're going to be wasting time and money. That being said, Eric Haas, God bless him, painted the bathrooms. I understand they look a bunch better, but also remember that as a city, we are required to use licensed, certified plumbers, electricians, builders, and while we can work on remodeling projects at home, city property must be done by licensed professionals or the inspector can have it all torn out. So, I really appreciate everyone's enthusiasm and willingness to volunteer, but it's a law, it's an insurance issue, but I know it all steps for pride in our community and I love that and it will happen. We had a fun Friday on October 7th. I took treats to various departments to say thank you for your hard work. I was honored to attend a gala at Governor DeWine's official residence in Columbus, had a chance to speak with several representatives in the governor and Attorney General's Office. I also got to remind the governor of the importance of funding projects in St. Clairsville. It was a very nice event indeed. Met with Eric and Eric at the rec center, talked about upcoming events as well as thanked them for procuring assistance from the Belmont County Correctional Prison to put new stone and landscaping in and tear out the weeds. If you go down and look at the amphitheater, looks very nice from the front. They took out all the weeds, they put decorative stone and just remember the facade of the amphitheater was newly treated and the landscaping is all done, so I can't wait for the summer concerts to begin. Remember Boothe, the bike trail sponsored by Belmont County Soil and Water and will be decorated by the rec center. That'll be on Tuesday, October 25th from 4 to 6 in the gazebo, the bike trail. If anybody wants to help with that, reach out to Eric. I'm sure we could use some help in the tunnel handing out candy. There are also, Wendy told me, will be at a Don Halloween bash on Friday, October 28th in town. That should be a lot of fun and that's about it, Jim. Lots going on.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I do. You were saying you had a conversation with Jeremy and Jeff about the water. Where, where are we?
Well, the infrastructure, they're still laying the groundwork for that. We had, and for the pipe way across the reservoir, we received a letter from ODOT, I'm sure Jeremy will be addressing that. They had to put the brakes on their project, they won't be done by October 31st, so they are giving us a window to get, go in and fix our project, but Jason was on it Friday, I think, you got that letter on Friday afternoon. They were already out exercising the valves to make sure they all turn and move, so that when it is time to reconnect that water, they'll be able to do it.
When, when is the last time the valves were exercised, do you know?
The day that I was laying on hard belt drive with my shock fat trying to turn it. They were, they were done when that project happened, at least that.
They've been done since then. They're required to be done every year.
Okay, there you go.
Any other questions for the mayor?
What, what time was the Boothe, the bike trail?
Four to six. Sure, on October 25th, Tuesday.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Sure.
Okay, we'll move on to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. Make this short and sweet. Completed projects, the smoke testing in Ward 4 has been done, that means the entire city's been done. I have a list of everybody there, if you're interested in it, come see me sometime. Water distribution project's out to bid, bid's due November 1st at 12:00 P.M. here at the city building. As the mayor mentioned, we had the plumbing lines at the rec center cambered, had some issues with some concrete debris, and if you guys remember, last year we picked a brick out of the system. I think after cambering it, that should take care of any sewer backup issues that we had. As the mayor mentioned, we still have a water supply problem there. I think it's just the showers themselves, but if those aren't gonna be used and decommissioned, then we should be good. The donated property on Reservoir Road, or the transfer for that is in progress, working with the law director on that. The grants for the two pieces of property were submitted, and the canopy, urban canopy grant also. Upcoming project, civil service exam on October 25th at the rec center at 5:30. October 21st, 3:00 P.M. registration deadline. The I-70 project, as the mayor mentioned, email from ODOT on Friday. We started on that, working with the contractor to get them on board. They were not anticipating being there until next month, so trying to get our fingers crossed and get everything going through. Acasment pipe, working on a couple other projects, sure, canopy, building projects. Rec center restrooms, as the mayor mentioned, the walls were painted. Can actually epoxy the floors tomorrow with camera in the lines, they should be good. Shouldn't have any problems with that. Skip the departments for this year at this point. Rec center, the mayor mentioned Boothe Bike Trail, there's a fantastic Halloween event on Saturday, October 29th for kids ages one to 12, and then that is not to be confused with the city's Halloween, which is on the 31st. There's a craft show scheduled for November 19th down there, and then vacuum basketball is, registration has started, has a November 7th deadline. Good to the city, finally, no one out sick, all of our staff are back. Chief, I do believe everyone's back from returning leave too, so that's always good. And then, forgot to do this beginning of the month, didn't really have anybody nominated yet, but got a nomination for employee of the month. It's another one of our seasonal guys. He's been working with us all the summer, he's a retired construction worker, added outdoorsman, hunter, fishing. He's very humble, we actually tried to deny the nomination. He's married with three children, and that was really all I could get out of him, but it's Bob Russenberg was nominated by Donnie, so.
I was just in for asking questions, I mean, come through, and I did get out of the race today, and talked to Eric, and while there's still some work that they're doing with the floor, I think kind of the, they're really starting to look good. They've got walls painted, and Eric's getting a lot of stuff done down there, and there's a bathroom that's gonna look, be in pretty good shape pretty before you roll, so he's doing a great job. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Eric?
I do. Someone mentioned the flag that's caught in the tree at the rec center. They were asking when that would be taken out of there.
I have never heard that yet, so I'll have it then tomorrow.
It's right in, in the front, there's a tree that.
Yeah, that flagpost shouldn't have been over at that, it's been caught before.
Also, when is the, it was supposed to be the end of October, the Marietta Street repair?
Still, we're met with the contractor to do the casement work underneath that. As soon as I get the price on that, we can pull the trigger. Casement pipe for that alone is gonna be about $20,000.
So it's no longer at end of October?
We're shooting still for the end of October. I have not heard back, you got a revised number from the asphalt contractor that came through, so.
Jeremy, can you update us on the work that's being done on Bellevue and Orsager?
Basically, what we had there was a catch basin that decided it wanted to fail. The whole thing kinda collapsed. It's one of the main ones where we have, I do believe it's a 30 or 36-inch storm sewer line that comes down into there and flacks all that stuff. So what we've had to do is come in there, it's an old brick one, we came in there, took out all the existing concrete that was there, reformed it up, poured concrete, put the grate back on, plates on it now to protect the concrete, let it cure some more, but the form should be stripped either tomorrow or the next day, and hopefully traffic will be back on it by, in the next week.
Will that help us with the heavy rains, with the, the?
It, it should, but it, it was just one of those things that just decided it wouldn't want to hold up anymore.
Thank you.
Welcome.
On the bathrooms, the rec center, I'm confused. Is, is there plumbing, extensive plumbing issues or not?
No, we didn't, we found some debris in the lines, so basically, there's not much of an issue. We think the backup was caused last year, there was actually a brick in the line last year, and we got it out, and it hasn't backed up since then, so we're kind of thinking that that is what was causing the issue. And how the brick got in there, don't know, it's probably literally from when it was constructed.
Well, I know there's been a lot of people asking about the restroom renovation, so they.
One more question, and it's probably gonna be, need to be directed towards Catherine, I don't know, but I don't know if anybody else got the email about the meeting about parking uptown?
Yes, we've been approached by a building resident and, or building owner, and they had asked us about the chamber, about actually having a traffic control person again. When I talked with chief when we were doing the budget last year, we basically made the decision that it wasn't profitable, and the chamber at the time had told us that they weren't interested in it, they didn't like it, they thought that it caused more harm than anything, because it was, people were getting ticketed. Part of the issue is that now, what was it, a Supreme Court ruling that you can't chock a tire? We have to have this $5,000 GPS camera that takes a picture of everyone's tires, and then you can come back later and look at it and determine if, if or not they have moved or not. So it, it was a whole realm of even a part-time person going through it. So the building owner requested this for myself, chief, and, and the chamber, so we were just announcing it and letting it be out to anybody, any building owners in the city that would like to be interested in meeting.
Okay, 'cause I know, did anybody else get this?
Yeah, so, yeah, I didn't understand.
It's on, it's, do you realize it's on Election Day at 9:00 A.M.?
I didn't pick the time or anything, I just was asked to attend.
I mean, and I think some from council may want to attend something like that, and it would be nice to let us know, but this is what the plan.
That was the email, what meeting was set up, and the email that went out?
So we didn't set it up? It wasn't us?
I, I didn't set it up. I don't know if it was at the chamber, I know we had sent, Roberto had worked with the chief and myself, and looked at our calendars and sent them possible dates, so my assumption is that it was the chamber that set it up, but I could be wrong.
That was today. I was asked my availability, availability the first week of November, and I said any day. So that was today that I was asked if I could be available, and I said any day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, and late this afternoon, I was notified that that was the date that the chamber and, and everybody else had agreed that they could be available to me.
And so that's when we received it, when you must have gotten it, because at 4:00 this afternoon is when we got it. I just wanted to, for a historical perspective, we've talked about this in the police committee several times over the last couple years.
Yes.
And it was not anything that, that the city was recommending at that time, nor the chamber at that time, so this is kind of all new to us, that this is an issue at the moment, or this is something that hasn't been discussed?
I personally think it's just the, the one business owner has a business coming in and wants, or the building owner has a business coming into this facility and wants, wants it for his use, but.
Yeah, I think the issue for the city is that we pay for the, the parking person that goes around and, like Jeremy said, you can't, you can't chalk the tire anymore, so now you need this really pricey piece of equipment, and so checking parking every two hours is that what we want our officers to do, and so that we would have to hire a part-time person to do that. And then what the tickets are, and then is that business friendly or not, that's why the chamber had never been supportive, or I don't wanna speak for the chamber, but what we had been told before in our conversations with the police committee is that was not something the chamber at that time was pursuing, so we haven't had a conversation about it in the police committee meeting for the last year, because it's not been an issue that's been brought to our attention.
It's, yeah, it's been moot for a year, and so.
Okay, any questions, J.C.?
Is that something we have to vote on?
For, to get the equipment and the. Where we have the equipment, it's a subscription that we end up paying for and everything else, and it'd be salary per personnel, so technically, yes, because you'd vote on the budget, but you wouldn't vote on this. It's hiring, firing, is that administrated?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, deer. So, there's lots of deer, and I've gotten lots of complaints about them destroying the property. What can we do? We have discussion.
We've had a discussion, I know, me and you, and me, you and the mayor, one of our police officers has reached out to the game warden, but has not heard back yet, so there's nothing at this point that we can say.
There are lots of products on Amazon for deer repellent, I've seen them a lot.
Yeah, shotgun shells.
Okay, any other questions for Jeremy?
He wants to be the sure answer.
Okay, we'll move on to Police Steven. Two part bets, you have a report, Steven?
Good evening, council. We've had the meeting that the mayor mentioned with Daniel Mason. We have a meeting this week coming up with the county's critical incident training steering committee to discuss further training and available services. We've got, hopefully, my final meeting with the Department of Justice Technical Training and Assistance to possibly close that body warm camera grant. Since all progress was made, all monies are paid out, and everything has been in service. Quick reminder, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the Tri-Kinning Women's Help Center will be having their annual march, October 19th, that's Wednesday, at 6:00 P.M. They come down Main Street and to the Courthouse Plaza, they will have a brief ceremony and a couple of guest speakers, should take about an hour or so. Main Street will be blocked from Marietta to Newell, to Newell Avenue, or North Market Street, forgive me, from 6:00 to 7:00. And as Jeremy mentioned, also a reminder that trick or treat is 31st from 6:00 to 7:30, so please try to avoid driving in town.
Thank you, chief. Anybody have any questions for the chief? Okay, move on to Finance Director, Annette Williams.
Good evening, everyone. The only thing I have tonight is the 2021 financial audit is available for public viewing now. If anyone wants to check that out, you can, you can get a copy from me, or the public can get it on the auditor's of state website, so that's all I have.
Any questions for the Finance Director?
What was found in the audit?
And there was no significant findings.
Thank you.
Year two.
Okay, Mr. Murphy is not here this evening, so we'll move on to council reports. Finance, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Finance Committee met tonight, reported a meeting. I think every council member has a report in front of them. Revenues, 40-year, three-quarters of the way through the year, are right on track at 75%. Expenses, we're spending about 53% right now, probably because new, new projects are getting done because of costs, et cetera, and we're waiting on start dates. The audit is, Annette said, is on the website. What's the, what is that website, just Google?
Auditor of State. Auditor of State of Ohio, and then you search, do search audits, and head in St. Clairsville.
So that audit's finalized. We also talked about, if anybody has any questions regarding the audit, to possibly set up a meeting with the auditor. If it's everybody at once, it'll have to be a public meeting, or you can give me your questions, you can call the auditor yourself, you can ask her to explain it to you, but I think it'd be a good idea if everybody became familiar with it, at least the balance sheet, to see what our liabilities are, outstanding, and, because we're gonna be coming up on our audit here pretty soon, so I think I'm gonna call the auditor myself and get some, get some questions against which, so just let me know.
But it's a clean audit.
Yes.
Good job.
Good job.
Okay. Jeremy, I know we're way under what we were projecting this dinner, aren't we still waiting for really, really expensive piece of equipment that hasn't been prepared?
The back area machine, yeah.
That's a chunk.
That, and then the, no, the mini excavator came in, got that in, got the lommer in, the zero turn is in now, so we're just in time to chop off leaves with it. Still have some other equipment and things in other projects, have the I-70 project, but we still have to pay for some stuff on that. It's low, but, but it'll jump fast.
Anybody, J.C.?
Yeah, I have a question for Jeremy, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask.
That's all right.
Leaf pickup, are we gonna have anything left for today?
Yes, I kinda had it mentioned in there, we're working with the street department now to set up times and dates, when we'll actually start going and which wards first. If anyone wants to start bagging leaves, just call up the city building, leave number with your street address, and we'll, we'll send somebody out to get them. But the, they're starting to get, and then after tomorrow, tonight, tomorrow, they'll probably really be down, but we'll get that.
Do they have to be in bags, or?
We will go through and do the leaf machine like we did before, but we don't have the schedule set up yet, which wards we'll start with and which streets. So once we have that, hopefully I'll have that for next meeting, and then be able to go through it. But if anyone wants to start now, put them in bags, and then we'll come pick up the bags.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Okay, we'll move on to Utilities. Terry, do you have anything?
No report tonight. Our next meeting will be November 7th, right?
November 7th.
At 6:15, that's it.
Okay, Beth, do you have anything for Police Committee?
I do not.
Streets north side.
Hi, I noticed a lot of patching going on. Walnut looks good, Brady Alley was patched, looks good. There's a couple streets, if we could do some work on Kill Site and possibly the alley at Belmont Savings. I know there's a lot of deep holes in Belmont Savings.
Belmont Savings is gonna be one of the ones torn up in the, the project, but we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, we can do some patching, yes. Thank you.
Okay, streets outside.
Just glad to see we're out there fixing bodies again, but other than that, no report.
Okay, everything on safety?
No report.
Building in grounds, Linda?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend the dedication ceremony down at South Park, and it was very nice. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. The furniture is outstanding. Anybody that gets a chance.
Anybody that gets a chance, please take a look at it. It's super, super nice. As a matter of fact, it's really nice to sit down there and watch the kids play on the newly surfaced basketball court. Which brings me to Elizabeth. Have we, and Mr. Brooks has stated many, many times verbally that the city has permission to use that property, to access.
Anytime you're dealing with real estate, in order for it to be effective, it has to be recorded document.
Okay.
So.
Recording it. Okay.
So that would be an easement, or?
So if, have, have we discussed easement in perpetuity with him?
I have, I have not had any discussions. I believe others in the city have reached out.
I finished the answer, please.
Yes, I believe others in the city administration have reached out discussing the possibility of obtaining an easement.
Okay, but council, some of council was concerned about the next owner. In perpetuity means forever. And if we do an easement in perpetuity, the easement would follow the property and not the owner. In other words, forever. Mr. Brooks gives us the permission that would go to the next owner, and the next, and the next.
Yeah, that's what we discussed last time. If you have an easement for ingress and egress, it's recorded. It becomes, it goes with the land. So it will follow the land. Now, some easements do have language, reverter language in there. Should we no longer use South Park or need that access, we change the road, then that easement would fail and the property would revert back to the landowner. The landowner would no longer have that encumbrance on the property. So, you know, by an encumbrance means that somebody has a, or our case, the city would have a use for that easement. So Mr. Brooks, if he wants to plant a tree in the middle of the easement, he couldn't do that because we have an easement for ingress and egress. Or any future property owner. I'm just going with current property owner.
But there is a document.
There is a document. Anytime you're dealing with real estate, because somebody has to be able to go and look that up. So that's when you go to the county reporter's office, you do a title search, you find out that there is an easement. Usually, it is then carried forward in the deed as subject to an easement. So that's.
So that won't have to be done legally and recorded?
Right, right.
London, do you know if Mr. Brooks is willing to execute the document?
No, I just, I thought that probably since it is something legal, it seems it would be, Elizabeth.
Well, and like I said, people in the administration have, my understanding has spoken with the landowner in the past, and there's not been an interest. I have personally not been asked to do that. I'm usually just, you know, asked to prepare these instruments, and I'll prepare them unless the agreements have been reached.
Who, who would be the appropriate person to speak to landowners typically?
Probably from the administration would be Jeremy, the mayor.
Did you get that conversation? It's pretty much kind of flat now, is what we were told, so.
I don't know. My understanding was that both Jeremy and Eric had approached Mr. Brooks about.
Not totally.
So it doesn't have to be administration, who does this? I'm sorry.
No, it's just, he was approached by Jeremy, and I think Eric did ask him also. At that time, it might change his mind in the future, but at the time, he expressed no interest in voting that, so.
And there's also the possibility that a land, a landowner could reach out to the city. And we've had several landowners reach out to the city regarding certain properties they have and certain uses they want, whether it's to sell it to give us access to something. But they have reached out to the city.
So somebody were interested.
Right.
In improving something that we didn't have access to legally.
Right.
They could reach out also.
They could reach out also, yes.
So just the other thing I'll say about South Park is that Mr. Smith and I had the opportunity to go to South Park in the rain, and the furniture was equally as nice. So unaware of the conversation.
Okay, planning commissioner, Christie, do you have anything on planning commissioner?
I have no report. The next meeting is November 14th at 6:00 o'clock.
Mayor District, Lynn, do you have anything on fire district?
Yes, as everybody's probably aware, we do now have the carers coordinator. And I tell you, to me, it's going to be such a benefit to the, to the county, especially since the county is 26% geriatric. I mean, it's, it's, he or she's going to be super busy, I believe. But in, on behalf of the board and the fire department, the district, we'd like to thank the Belmont County Commissioners, Lisa Kazmersky from Belmont County Senior Services, Jeff Mountain of Jonathan Family Services, Ross Proll of the Belmont County Health Department, Jeff Britton of Hightown Hills Health, and Health Centers. And the next meeting is Wednesday, October 26th at 9:00 AM.
At the firehouse?
Oh, yes, at the firehouse.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Recreation, Christie, do you have anything on the rec department?
The mayor covered everything that I was going to update everyone on. I don't recall, she mentioned Bantam basketball registration is still going on. The signups end November 7th. I had everything else she said. The next meeting is October 25th at 4:30.
Thank you, Christie. Park District, Lynn, do you have anything?
Yes, they are installing new lights for the tennis and pickleball courts. And also, they're in the beginning process of renovating the pool bath house. The next meeting is Monday, November 7th, 4:30 PM at Preferred Legacy Bank. And they are now down to one meeting a month. So that will be the only meeting.
And they officially go to part everything, get or?
No, parts still are.
Just pools, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This evening, we have no coordination resolution or anything to be discussed. Again, I will remind everyone that hopefully by the 7th, the next meeting, November 7th, that council will get an opportunity to contact the two gentlemen from the gas accreditation and answer any questions that you might have. And hopefully, council will be prepared to get the numbers for both, both parties. Hopefully, we can make a decision at the next meeting.
The next step for that is, so we had our due diligence a couple weeks ago. Look at this, ask any questions we might have, just look at every material. What is the next step? Is we could make a motion to enter into an agreement, to allow the mayor to enter into an agreement? I mean, I just wondered what the next step is.
That would be, and then we.
Yeah, recommendation, yeah.
Yeah, and then, then I would bring back a resolution for our following meeting going into that agreement.
But I don't know that we have a month. Like, is it something that we could vote on next?
If you, you have to vote on it, in order for me to prepare the legislation, I have to know the party that you're going with. And if you're still discussing that at your next meeting.
But if we made a decision by next, I guess that's what I'm wondering, is can it not be enforced next meeting, or?
You would still need to do the legislation. I mean, it'd be.
You'd have to have a special meeting, probably.
You'd have to, yes, we could do it by special meeting.
Two that could create legislation and have it done by the end of the month, there would have to be a legislative legislation to pass the one. Okay, again, last reminder, I think it's come up two or three times, but Halloween in the city is October 31st at 6:00 to 7:30. I think the procedures are the same. If you're interested in passing out candy, turn your porch lights on. And if anyone is driving through town, anytime before 4:00, please be careful because there will be a lot of kids out on the street. So other than that, the motion to adjourn? Second, is adjourned.